Hey Brian.
Hi Brian.
Hey everyone.
Alright, did you see that it's recording?
Yep. Well, I have 7:01, so let's, in the interest of time, get started and people join us as we're going, we'll try and catch them up. So, this is our first drop in Zoom with school committee members. So, thank you to those who are here. Just gonna introduce myself. I am Kathy Lewis. I am a Mashpee, obviously Mashpee resident and parent. My daughter is in the ninth grade at the middle high school. I grew up in Mashpee. Education and youth empowerment's kind of always been my passion. So I, you know, came on to school committee hoping to make a change, make sure our kids are getting quality educations. And we have policies in place that help support that and a budget in place that supports that. And a superintendent in place that supports that. I'm in my fourth year, so the first year of my second term. And this year I am the chair of the school committee. I just wanna pass it over to Brian. He can do a quick little introduction if you don't already know him. But Brian, wanna introduce yourself?
Sure. Wenina Khan, good evening everyone. Brian Whedon. I am the vice chair of the school committee. I am going into my final year here, my three-year term, which is up in May. And it's really a pleasure to work for our students. I'm also a member of the Mash Wampanoag Tribe, 2011 graduate of Mashpee High School. And started the Human Rights Club and working with some of the teachers and things. So it's really great to give back to this community. And I also serve as the chairman of the Mash Wampanoag Tribe as well. So look forward to speaking with our community and hearing, you know, how this goes and the feedback that we have. I'm making sure that we can work together to make sure that we're providing all the best education that we can possibly for our students and families. So, thank you.
Thanks Brian. We also have Superintendent DeBoer on with us tonight. She's gonna be our technical Zoom, our Zoom tech support here. Did you wanna say anything before we're done?
Well, you know, this is tied to the school committee's goals for this year, doing these Zoom meetings with two members. So it's not technically an official meeting. And as you can see, there's three main topics for tonight as well as a Q and A. And then on this first slide, anyone who is, and I know we have a small group here tonight, but it is being recorded so that we can share it out with our families. But there is the email address that goes to all five members. So whenever anyone wants to reach out to the school committee, that is a good email to use. They also have their individual emails, which is their first letter, last name, and that same ending. So I will advance this.
Great, thank you. So Superintendent DeBoer said we have three topics tonight. Excuse me, forgive me, I have a bit of a cold setting in. But we're gonna talk about the role of the school committee. So basically, what do school committees do in Massachusetts? We're gonna talk about the role of superintendent. We're gonna go over the election process, just in case anybody was interested in that. Then we'll have some time for some Q and A. So.
Yeah, this just shows your.
Yep, so this is our current school committee. We've got, school committees are five members typically in Massachusetts. They can be a little bigger if they're regional, but in Mashpee, we have a five-member school committee. Myself and Brian. And then we also have Matt Davis, who is our secretary this year. He is also coming up on the end of his first term. Don Myers, who's our veteran member, he's been on the school committee for 11 years. And then Dan Robbie, guess who is in his first year of his first term? He was newly elected this past May. So it's been a pleasure working with these gentlemen, I have to say. Everybody's got quite interesting perspectives and brings a lot of different experiences to the table. And I think that's important because our students all come from different backgrounds. So it's been very good, I think, with this group to work together. And kinda, we all bring our own experiences and our own hopes for our children to our work. So that's kind of what I have to say about that. Brian, if at any time you wanna jump in and add on to anything, feel free. I don't wanna do all the talking, maybe you can do a couple of slides when we get through. But feel free to jump in. So Patty, you wanna go to the next slide?
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna add to this piece was that often, just like we are with our students, the diversity within each individual is not necessarily something that you know from looking at someone. So these five individuals really do represent a diverse collection in our students and families in many different ways, more than you might think.
And I think, like I said, that's what makes it so great. Next, we have, so every school, just like good businesses, we have a mission and we have a vision. So the Mashpee Public Schools' mission is to ensure a student-centered, comprehensive program of rigor, scope, and depth that prepares all students to be college, career, service, and civic-ready, and teachers respect and acceptance of others. That came about through our, I think this was most recently revised when we came up with our district improvement plan, if I'm not mistaken. I feel like that got reworded during that period.
Yes.
And then we also came up with a more concise and very specific vision of what we want to see Mashpee students and what Mashpee school difference would be. And our vision is that every student, every day, is safe, respected, and engaged to achieve academic and social growth in a personalized learning environment. So that is kind of what we strive for as a school committee, to make sure that we are working toward this mission and toward this vision in collaboration with the superintendent. So what our policies, what our budget are, we're trying to make sure they align to this mission and this vision. And then we, you know, charge the superintendent with, you know, putting it into practice. So Brian, did you wanna add anything here?
No, I just think that the superintendent, as well as the school committee, does, you know, take the mission and the vision into consideration in each and every decision that we do make. So these are definitely like our core values and make sure that we reiterate that anytime that we possibly can.
That's a great point. We definitely do keep those in mind. So this kind of ties into now, so we've got our mission and we have our vision. So now, what does a school committee then really do? In Massachusetts, we are a school committee. And, you know, that's, some states call them school boards. So you might hear people say school board, but in Massachusetts, we definitely call them school committees. We are all elected by voters of Mashpee to serve three-year terms. And there are three main things that a school committee does within Massachusetts. We are to write and maintain policies that guide the district. We approve and monitor the budget for the school system. And then we hire and evaluate superintendent, the superintendent of the district. So those are the three main things. We don't really do anything operational, that is on the superintendent. However, because we hire and evaluate the superintendent, we're making sure that the superintendent is operating the schools in a way that aligns to the policies and is managing the budget that we set in a way that is providing our students with all the best opportunities and the best environment to learn and grow and develop as young people. So again, we're more policy and budget-oriented than we are operational. So, you know, if it's something staff-related, the school committee, you know, you can talk to a school committee member and say, hey, what's going on with this? But we're ultimately probably gonna go back to the superintendent and say, you know, we're hearing this about a staff member or we're hearing this about, you know, a class that's not being offered. That stuff is the operational stuff. We might have a policy in place that says something about, you know, what type of curriculum is used, but it's on the superintendent to do that operational piece. So as a school committee, we aren't really involved in that. But we are involved in the policies that help guide those decisions for operation. We do have an online policy manual that you can look at. We are, we review it periodically. And then sometimes we'll get updates from the state, the State School Committee Association, MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, where they might recommend updating a certain policy or let us know about any changes to legislation that requires us to update a policy such as harassment policies, for example. So sometimes that's how the policies happen, and we might get into that a little bit in a minute here. But we also have our schedule of meetings, our agendas, our minutes of past meetings, our meeting recordings, which are recorded by the wonderful people at MashPTV. And then they put them on their YouTube channel. So, and we also then get a copy that we put on the school website as well. And we also have the budget. So all of that is on the school committee page of our website, which the link is right there, mtstk12.org. Brian, did you wanna add anything? Or does anyone have any questions? We can pause for a second if anyone has questions. Okay.
I would just, if it's okay, just wanted to add, just for those listening, that although school committee is not involved in the day-to-day operations, I work collaboratively with them. It's really a great group of leaders and make sure that they know everything sort of that's going on the best I can. So I meet with the chair once a week. We go over anything, and sometimes it's personnel conversations. Sometimes it's events that have happened in a particular school. But I just wanna make sure that everyone realizes that there is really a very close communication between the superintendent and the school committee on a day-to-day basis as needed and that we try to keep everybody sort of on the same page.
Yes, that was a very good point, thank you.
Yeah, also to that, it's also really helpful. If you are interested in the school committee, you know, you can obviously go to the YouTube page and channel and look at some meetings, go to the meeting minutes, so on and so forth. But it is interesting, the onboarding. I will say that the school committee does a phenomenal job with onboarding, as well as Superintendent DeBoer. So if anyone's, you know, hesitant on applying or, you know, kind of getting into it, know that the support is there for you, as well as charting the course, which is a requirement that school committee members are required to fulfill. I believe it's within your first year of your term. And it's kind of talk about open meeting law, Robert's Rules of Order, how to evaluate the superintendent, so on and so forth. So you do have the resources also to be successful.
Yeah, that's a great point, Brian. You know, and that ties into this member guidebook. We do have a member guidebook, which is a resource that we all as committee members have access to. But so do you as the public, if you were ever curious what we as a committee, you know, have been trained in, so to speak. You know, we are a pretty collaborative group, and I really am happy to be able to say that in Mashpee. You know, you hear, I have heard some horror stories of other districts where their school committees did not get along. But this guidebook really does help set the foundation. And in addition to that, as Brian mentioned, charting the course, that's run by the state, again, the State Association of School Committees. And so that is something that really dives deep into those three pillars of budget, policy, and superintendent hiring and evaluation. So Superintendent DeBoer clicked on that link. This is what our guidebook looks like. It talks about pretty much everything that you might ever need to know about being on school committee. It shares our mission and our vision. It talks about our operating protocols, the organization of the committee, any professional development you might find you want to go to, how to represent in different places as a school committee member, how to be an effective committee member. And then it dives deeper into budget, because sometimes, you know, not everyone totally understands how schools are funded in terms of what comes from state aid versus what comes from the town, grants, and all the different pieces of money that help run these schools that, you know, are providing our children with the education and opportunities that they do. There's a lot to it. So this handbook is very helpful and very important. And again, if there's questions, you know, I think, I know myself, I know Brian, we kind of pride ourselves on being able to have kind of that open policy. If you have a question, ask it, like, somebody's gonna answer it and we're gonna be here. And we try to make sure that the parents in our district know that too. Like, we are here to answer, and if we can answer, we will. And if we can't, like Superintendent DeBoer said, I'm pretty sure all of us have a pretty open communication line with her. And if we hear things, we do try to bring them to her to look into. So that's that. Got some great pictures of our students. If you haven't seen the pictures on Thursdays, you'll miss it out. They're like the highlight of my week. If you wanna go to the next slide then, I think?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have the committee at large. We talked kind of about how we're a five-member committee. But then within that committee, we have the organization, which are our officers. But then we also have subcommittees, liaisons, and working groups. So we kind of went over the officers. I'm chair, Brian is vice chair, Matt's our secretary, and then we have two members at large, Dawn and Dan. And then our subcommittees, those require two people to kind of work on specific items. So again, if you look at the subcommittees, they kind of get more back to those pillars. So curriculum, negotiations, policy, and superintendent evaluation. Policy and superintendent evaluation, those are two very clearly defined pillars of the school committee purview. But then curriculum and negotiations, those can sometimes impact a couple different ways, whether it's budget, whether it's mostly budget for those two. But also making sure that we're getting our student growth. Liaison positions, those are members of the committee who, if needed, and if they would like to, are able to attend these various meetings. The select board, the collaborative, finance committee, just kind of our interaction with other regulatory and advisory committees within the town, as well as the tribe. And then finally, our working groups. Those are a little less formal. They don't necessarily require a posted meeting. They're still open to the public if you wanted to, but they're not necessarily hybrid. None of these are really hybrid meetings, so to speak. Excuse me. But, you know, the public is able to send questions, to ask about it. The meetings for subcommittees are posted. They legally have to be, working groups do not need to be posted. So you might not see those meetings posted, but the subcommittees do well. And for working groups, we have finance, outreach, and engagement, school committee efficiency and effectiveness, and the plan for success working group. Legislative representative, that's just the person that, when we go to either anything that might be happening on the state, at the state house level or at the state school committee level, like this next week, we have our big state conference. And we have a representative who goes and kind of helps with any resolutions that might be floating on. That's what the legislative representative is. This sheet lives on the website as well. So if you were ever like, hmm, I wanna know, you know, what, I wanna know if somebody can revise the policy on, I don't know, headphones, let's say, just because it's a option to my head. They could go on here, find out who's on the policy subcommittee and maybe send them an email to talk about it. Liaisons, you know, that's, again, if something came up and you need to talk about it, you can go and find this list and it will help you understand who is your best person to contact. In addition to this, subcommittees, liaisons, and working group list, you can also find our meeting schedule online, which is also very helpful. We try to set our meeting schedule about a year in advance so that everybody knows, and it's pretty much on the calendar. Typically, we meet the third Wednesday of the month. There are a few exceptions due to holidays plus budget season. So like in January, we do meet that first Wednesday in January, but that's because we're in budget season and we need to approve the budget that the superintendent presents. And then in June, we do meet right after the election as well, so we can do a reorganization if we need to and get everything in place for the next year. And then this year, we have a new meeting of school committee, student advisory committee. The Massachusetts has a law that allows for students to have an advisory committee and have a non-voting representative at all school committee meetings. So it took us about a year to get this in place, but we have it. We have a great student rep who's a senior at Mashpee High. And he and his four other fellow students, they basically are like school committee. They understand they're gonna learn about the policies, they're gonna learn about the budget. They're able to deliberate with us and provide that student input in terms of, not just at the high school though. They're supposed to be covering from Washington, you know, from school to the high school. So it's really a great opportunity. But that's where our meetings are typically there at 5:30 at the Washington Library, unless otherwise noted. Brian, did you wanna add anything on any of this before we move on?
No, I would say that some of these are definitely important. If you don't stay up to date on some of the things that happen at our school committee meetings, we understand the mask policy was a big issue, you know, in the middle of the pandemic, as well as changing public comment. We used to traditionally have public comment twice, once in the beginning and once after we had gotten through all the other additional items on the agenda. We've updated that policy recently and was trying to get feedback from the community. So if there are things that come out through the superintendent's weekly updates or school committee agendas or items like that, please don't hesitate, like the chair said Kathy, to reach out to us on those particular subcommittees so we can give you a little bit of a better understanding on, you know, why we've made those decisions moving forward.
And the only thing I was gonna add to as well, to the chart with the subcommittees and liaisons is, a lot, that's a place for sort of a lot of the nitty-gritty work to get done so that then the members can report out to the remaining members of the committee and potentially have a more efficient use of time at the regular meeting. So definitely the subcommittees, curriculum, negotiations, policy, and my evaluation, we sort of work through a lot of things that then a summarized version goes to all the members. And then the working group, they actually do a lot of the work that allows for a lot of questioning. I'm gonna pick finance working group. So when we work on the budget and we're into FY25 has been submitted already, but working through line item by line item and asking those kind of questions, which doesn't always lend itself to the bigger school committee meeting. But as long as we make sure that the two members are comfortable and can speak about all of those items, then it makes it better for the bigger committee and more efficient meeting.
Thank you for pointing that out, Patty, because a lot of times those conversations might not make it to our big meeting on that third Wednesday. But that doesn't mean the discussions haven't happened. You know, and in the spirit of full transparency, you know, we do really dig in, like, you know, she talked about finance and I've sat on those meetings and the questions get asked. And we do scrutinize and make sure, you know, that where the money is going is where it's truly needed and making sure that, you know, people are funded the way they need to be funded, that the principals have the budgets for their buildings, that the different athletic teams, the different extracurricular activities, that the food services, all of those different pieces. You know, like, it is very, it would make the big meeting very long, to say the least, if we went through that at one of our larger meetings. So those working groups really are very helpful. You know, the school committee, or I'm sorry, the outreach engagement, that's what kind of was the genesis of why we're here tonight. You know, this was something that that working group said, hey, this could be a good, a good thing. And they kind of came up with the plan for it and presented it back at our larger committee meeting. So when we get to that point in the agenda, which we'll see a sample agenda shortly, there's always a spot, if there were any subcommittee or working groups that met, there's time for them to share out. And that does open up our conversation at our meetings to kind of ask the people on those subcommittees or working groups, hey, like, did you talk about this? Okay, you did, what was said? Like, you kind of get, kind of get better information so that when we do have to make, take action or vote on something, we are pretty well-informed as best we can be. So, any, I don't know if you wanna go back for a second. Does anyone have any questions so far on any of this? I don't wanna go too fast or not give time for questions, but, okay. If you do, just raise your hand or shout out. Okay, we can go to the next one. So I, as I just said, this is what our sample, this is one of our sample agendas. It's actually our agenda from this past, our last meeting we had. Typically follows the same, the same order. You know, you'll see at the top that it's the business agenda with the date, the time. We do have our land acknowledgement that we read at every meeting because it's important. And we, as a school committee, have decided it's important to acknowledge, you know, where we are and the significance of the land that we have our meetings on. So we do include that in every meeting for the Wampanoag Tribe, as well as for the people who might not be aware of that and to be aware of that. We also have our mission and our value, our vision, which we went over at the beginning. So they're at the top of every single one of our agendas so that we are seeing it and are reminded why we are having these meetings. We also then have our pillars from our plan for success. Again, all of these pieces, they may seem like they're just taking up space on a page, but they really are there for us and for anyone who might be curious what we're working on, to see the bigger picture of what we're all working toward. So that's kind of what that top section of our agenda is geared toward. Then below, you'll see kind of our items one by one. Again, pretty basic, you know, call me the order, pledge allegiance, land acknowledgement. I won't go through the whole thing, but you can see there's various things. We do have public comment, as Brian mentioned, we did just change that. We are finding we weren't getting a lot of public comment at the end. Plus, if we have it at the beginning, it does give us time for the items. Chair did not reasonably know in advance to maybe discuss some of that or ask for an agenda item to be added later on. But, you know, we get presentations from the various schools, which are really great. You know, the kids get to come in and tell us what they're working on, or teachers come in and tell us what different projects or clubs have been doing. Those are great times to kind of see what our kids are doing and what they're learning and just get that dose of like good feeling, warm fuzzies, because, you know, they're, they're sharing. And last month, we got to learn about second grade math, which was really awesome. We go through, we review minutes. We have a standing agenda item for a representative from the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Education Department. So we make sure that we leave space every meeting for someone from their education department to come and give us an update on what's going on in the tribe's side of things. Our student advisory committee, as I said, our rep Andrew Kelly, he has time to present anything specific he might need to. Then we kind of get into the report of the superintendent where that update from the superintendent on personnel, on any upcoming things that are coming from her. We get administrator updates if our principals have something going on and they wanna share. We have space for them to share with the committee as well. And then we go into the director of finance. That's where we kind of look at the budget, ask any questions. We do also allow for questions to be emailed to our finance director in advance of the meeting. Those questions, if they are and when they are emailed in, do get posted on our website also. So again, if you see that in the meeting, we're not really asking a lot of questions. It's not that the questions aren't being asked, it's just they're being asked outside of that meeting. But we do, for full transparency, post those questions and answers, I believe. Correct, Patty? The answers also get posted.
Yeah.
But questions and answers that do get asked prior to the meeting are posted and you can look through them anytime as well to see, hey, they didn't ask this question. I wondered if somebody else did. You can always go and look on the website and see that. After that, like I said, there's that subcommittee's working group updates where they share out anything that happened. Then any unfinished or specifically assigned business that needs to be discussed, any votes, policy changes, different things might be in there, new business, again, kind of self-explanatory. And then by then, we get to items, the chair did not know and adjourned if we're, if we get through all of that, we can adjourn and all go home and get ready for the next month. Brian, did you wanna add anything to this? I mean, again, it's pretty self-explanatory, but feel free to add on.
I will say, the highlight for the meetings are definitely when our students come in and do presentations or hearing from our high school students after they return from a trip that we approved. You know, and they thank us for, you know, allowing them to go on that trip and the educational experiences. And the school committee has gotten effective, even to the point with the agenda. Previously, we did have like time slots and limits on there. And then we actually took them away and found that we were like running more efficient meetings and kind of getting out a little bit earlier and kind of, you know, going through the agenda versus following, you know, the line item, time-by-time slots that we did have previously. So I think collectively, like, everyone is definitely working together to make sure that we handle the business, but also make sure that we do get in and out, because we are volunteers at the end of the day. Just like everyone else, we have outside jobs, family obligations, and so on and so forth. So it is helpful to, you know, just change some of the minor things can definitely go a long way. So just wanted to mention that as well.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Can I add something too? In the fact that when the agenda is developed, it sort of starts in my office with whatever might have been discussed at the prior month's meeting that is a carryover. And then we also have, which I'm gonna link into here, a year-long calendar that sort of makes sure we don't forget some things. So if you look here, we always highlight the month that's coming up. So for the next meeting, it's a Native American presentation because it is Native American Heritage Month. I will be talking more about our FY25 budget and I actually will have our narrative to share. The Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award presentation is given at this meeting so that the recipient can make sure it gets on her college, hers or his college applications. We do, in November, have an initial calendar review for FY25. And I will say tomorrow morning when I meet with the chair, I have two versions for her to look at there as well. And then the conference that the chair mentioned, which is next week, they'll have an opportunity to share out from that experience. And then MMA. they'll have an opportunity to share out from that experience and then M M H S will be presenting. Um and I believe it is some Native American students sharing out some of the work they're doing with um nature's rights. Um but I also wanted to say that the agenda in draft form, we do our best to try to get it to all five members in advance enough so that anybody who wants to add something or has a comment or change to make, they let us know and we generally try to get the agenda, well, obviously it has to be posted forty eight hours with the town. We try to have it go out on a Friday um before Wednesday meeting and then sometimes the packet itself is more on a Monday, but we we're trying to do a better job of making sure, particularly in my Friday communication, that prior to that Wednesday, the upcoming Wednesday meeting, that we can share with our Mashpee community what's on the agenda for the next week.
Yeah, and that that last bit um about the agenda, that is something that came out of our annual uh retreat where we were talking about how to improve our communication and transparency with families and in the public because realistically, you know, while our main focus is the students, we recognize that, you know, majority Mashpee voters who help fund the schools through the town meeting votes might not have children in the schools. So we want transparency, not just for the parents, but also for those who are, you know, voting to approve the budget. Um and having this transparency, but also giving people a chance to understand what's being discussed. Um maybe if they have public comment, um they might want to come and plan it if they can see what's being spoken about. So that's something that's a little bit new enough in terms of our practices is making sure that that's available prior to the meeting, but I think it's it's pretty helpful for the public to know. And that way, again, if they do want to talk. Excuse me, if they do want to talk or they do want to come and make a comment, they're they're able to be well prepared. So that is that is our agenda and that's kind of how they look. So um I don't know if you want to go to the next slide? Okay, so we talked a little bit about um how we kind of work on our our goals and our missions as a school committee. And one of, I don't want to say buzzwords, but one of our big words is alignment. Um we need to make sure that we are aligned, not only with the superintendent's goals, but also with the goals of the district as a whole. And back in twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the school district started to develop this plan for success. Um it was approved by the school committee, June sixteenth, twenty twenty one, we're in year three of this five year district improvement plan. And during those workshops, we had stakeholders from the the entire Mashpee community. We had teachers, students, administrators, school committee members, parents, business owners, and I believe some select board members as well. Um all participate in a bunch of workshops that were facilitated by a professional um who does these types of district improvement plans. Um a former educator who who understands the, like what schools need to do and how to really help hone that vision in a sense. So again, as you can see at the top, you've got the mission, you've got the vision, you've got the core values of what Mashpee Public School really stands for. And then our theory of action, which basically is explaining how, you know, how are we going to do all the things that we're saying in our mission and our vision and our core values? How are we doing that? And we came up with four, four pillars, portrait of a graduate, diversity, equity and inclusion, teaching and learning, and then Mashpee a connected community. And underneath that, we have strategic objectives and then strategic initiatives. Um and this document, it's a living document. It changes, it can be updated. Um as you can see, our outcomes, we do list them. Those little yellow boxes show what year we've worked on different pieces of it. So anywhere you see FY twenty four, those are things that we have set or the school has set to focus on. The, a successful school district has every piece in line. So they'll have their plan for success. The superintendent will then make his or her goals or their goals off of that plan. The school committee then also makes their goals off of this plan. And um administration as a whole, like principals, the faculty, the staff, everybody should be working kind of off of this plan to make their goals for the year. If everybody's doing that theoretically, we will have a successful school system that is moving forward and going in the in the direction of achieving these goals. And that's kind of this, that's why this document is so pivotal to what we as a school committee do and how we evaluate the superintendent and how we are evaluating um the policies and the curriculum and all of the things that school committee looks at, the budget, making sure that things are funded in order to achieve these goals. So this is a really interesting document. If you've never read it, give it a quick scan. You know, if you have questions about it, feel free to ask the school committee or ask any one of us to explain it a little bit better, but um I was part of that as a parent. I started out as a parent working on this and then I was elected. So then I shifted to school committee representative on this when it was developed. And the conversations, you know, they were, they were very in-depth conversations and I think covered a lot of different um aspects of what we want our schools to be and what, how we want our students to leave our schools and what we want them to know, what we want them to gain from being in our schools. So again, if you haven't read this before, highly recommend taking a look at it. These are the things, again, as Brian said earlier, we are trying to keep these at the forefront of everything we are doing. Um are we perfect on it? No, but are we open to learning from where we might stumble or slip? Yes. Um always, at least that's my take on it. Brian, you can correct me if you feel if I'm if I'm off base here, but I do feel like we we really hold these four pillars very, very dear to what our work as a school committee is. I don't know, Brian, did you want to add anything to the plan for success?
No, I think that this is um, you know, one of the most important documents um that we do have. Um and it is great to kind of have this uh roadmap, if you will, um to see, you know, where we want Mashpee to go. Um and it's a beautiful thing to see the collaboration between um the school committee and the superintendent on to make sure that we're all on the same page. Um and I believe that this has, you know, been successful. Um obviously, um jumping into this um kind of halfway through. Um but it is something that I think is uh really important for people to really understand. Um because this goes back to a lot of the reasons why we might look into curriculum um in different areas and different aspects um and also bring in um certain paraprofessionals or a professional development days, so on and so forth. Um to make sure that we're really um making sure we meet the mark when we talk about um investing into these objectives and these goals um and make sure that we work together.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on the plan for success before we move on?
I'll just add that from my perspective with um the leadership team and the teachers, like our decision-making for me starts at those four pillars. Which one does it fit under? And why are we going to be doing it? So it has been a very helpful um guide or plan for and um helping us make the decisions that are going to move us in the right direction.
Thank you. Oh, great. We can go to the next slide. And as I said, so we, we take, excuse me. Every year the school committee, we try to have um we try to have a retreat where we get together and typically it's after we've gotten the um family surveys. So you know, we send those family surveys out in February. We ask that families take them. We um two years ago decided to extend it to students and asked the students. Um I believe we did grades five through twelve this past year. Um and asked them to take a pretty much the same survey with maybe one or two questions changed so because parents might be asked it slightly differently. We take that information and data, we take the um plan for success. We take our past goals that we had from the year before. And we kind of start looking at where are we and where do we want to go? And using that document and that information at our retreat, we develop our goals. Which then are provided with the action steps. And you can see here, we did develop three goals. Um we talked about the standards that we wanted to hit from the uh plan for success. So, you know, this document also does live on our website. So if you ever wanted to dig in and see what we have set for our goals for the twenty three, twenty four school year, you can go and look, but what we found was a lot of people, one, didn't really know what school committees do. So we figured we should, we should fix that, uh which is again, why we're here tonight. Uh we found that communication needed to be improved, not just with the families, but also with the students. So we wanted to increase student voice, but we also want to make sure that families understand how to communicate, what to communicate, um where to communicate. Um and kind of get, get things back to more level um in terms of how families and people who have students in the district know how to communicate with the school committee. But also that can extend, like I said, to other stakeholders in our community who might be curious as to what's going on in the school. Um so that is kind of where our goals germinate from and what we work toward. Um they're not the only things we work towards, but they are kind of our bigger goals that we kind of are trying to measure to make sure that we can show our work toward them and and hopefully improve upon um as we work through the year. So Brian, did you, you helped kind of develop these action steps? Did you want to add anything to this?
No, I think um Kathy touched base on, um you know, majority of the stuff um that we are trying to work on. Um and one of these, obviously this uh evenings event that we're putting on. Um that's one of the biggest barriers that we see sometimes is just um the lack of um communication or education um between the stakeholders and um us as a school committee. Um if we don't hear from people at our meetings and so on and so forth, um you know, even if there's not a lot of people on tonight, um please make sure, you know, you do get the word out. We will have more of these. Um and we're trying it out this year. If it doesn't work, then you know, we'll go back to the drawing board, but just want to make sure that we have that open communication and uh let you know exactly what our roles are um and what our duties are and know that um we are here for you if you do need us. Um and the superintendent um does a phenomenal job at making sure that um you know, the community input is also represented in the school um with community outreach, um so on and so forth, and just attending a lot of our community events. Um I know we try to push to have a table at um open house and things like that from the school committee. Um if there's other events in the community that you feel like we should be at as well, um or want to encourage us, please don't hesitate to reach out um to us and send us an email or reach out to Superintendent DeBoer. Um she does come out with uh a list of events um and she does, you know, highlight some of the events that she feels school committee members should be at, but if there's other things and other ways we can be supportive to the community, um and other things that are going on, please, you know, let us know so that we can be there to help represent not only the district, but you know, the families as well.
Yeah, and, oh, sorry, go ahead. Did you want to say something Patty?
All I was going to say was that this particular um action, you know, step that the outreach working group developed, this recording can also be something that we share with our students because I don't think our students fully understand the role of the school committee as well. And we obviously can't get them to come to meetings necessarily. So hopefully this will be something that maybe we can get shared in a couple of uh classroom settings.
That'd be great. I just want to touch back on something Brian kind of said. You know, if there are events that you think it could benefit having a school committee there, I mean, we're currently every one of us is a parent at different stages in our, our journey as parents. Um but, you know, if that's a place that people might feel comfortable coming to us to talk about things and they're not comfortable coming to a meeting, that's fine. You know, like I can't stress enough that my email inbox is always open, Brian's email inbox is always open. Like we are, we serve at at your pleasure, basically, in the sense that you've elected us. And you know, we want, we want to hear from you and not just the good. I mean, we, we do hear the good from our presentations. But you know, if something's not necessarily working or you have questions on how it works, or you're trying to go through a process that you've never been through before. You know, and and trying to figure out, well, who do I contact? Like, we can help with that. We might not be able to like, you know, go full tilt for you in terms of like doing it. You know, we might have to say, well, you really should start with, you know, your classroom teacher, or you should start with you know, this person in this department. But we can at least help answer those questions as a school committee member. Um and I just want to make sure that people understand that. You know, a lot of times I think, people think, oh, they're elected, they're on a committee. We're like in an ivory tower, so to speak, but I think from my work with the four other gentlemen that I am on this committee with, we are like Patty said earlier too, we're all connected to different parts of Mashpee. Some of them overlap, some of them don't. But I think we pride ourselves on being able to, and I hate saying pride ourselves, but I think we all try our best to make sure that people know they can approach us if they have something they need to talk about. So just keep that in mind. And again, as you go through some of these things, if tonight you get off this and you go right to our website and start poking around and you have a question about things, shoot an email. We try to answer as fast as we can and and pass on what we can and help where we can. So I know why we all got into it, I think. Ultimately for the kids because they're at the forefront here of what we're working on. So this is just the second page of the goals. Um I'm not going to go too much through it, but if you want to read through it, it does have all of the action steps outlined in various um ways that we're going to continue to work on these goals. So I don't want to go to the next one.
The only thing I wanted to say sort of change in our practice is that, like in that yellow, making sure that in that Friday communication, we're a little bit more explicit with what the school committee talked about at their previous meeting because that's just one way of trying to make sure it's as easy as possible for stakeholders to know what's going on. Um and I did notice, I don't know if you watched the Mashpee Minute that the high school produces, but they had a nice segment this past Friday. Um that was from Eve Mayon, who is one of the um school committee, student advisory committee members, and it was talking all about what that their role is. And so hopefully that was something that also uh connected with some of the kids. This just is the third page that shows the goal, which has to do with the student advisory committee. And then also in the monthly enterprise articles that we do, we have a specific section or couple paragraphs highlighting the school committee um work so that we're trying to reach beyond just the people that get my Friday publication with what the school committee's uh working on.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out. So um and I, I am interested if people are noticing it, you know, I, I don't. Again, we don't always get the feedback, but if you find that that yellow box is helping you understand, let us know. And like Brian said, if it's not, we'll go back to the drawing board. You know, we want to engage the families and make sure they understand what our work is and how we're helping their children in this district. So if there's a better way for us to do it, please share it. We're, we're open to ideas, but this is our, this is what we're starting with. So hopefully we'll see some improvement as we work through this year. So um you want to go to the next slide? So we wanted to talk to you a little bit about the election schedule and the process of being elected to school committee. Like Brian said, we're elected volunteers. There is no stipends, there is no full, we don't, you know, quit our jobs to do this full time. We all have full-time jobs and we do this outside of that. Um which is kind of amazing to consider the dedication of volunteers in our town who step up to this role, who've done it before and who will do it at, you know, who will come up after. Um it's not easy work, I won't lie to you, but it is very rewarding um to know that, you know, you are, you are doing good work. Um but the process for election in Mashpee, February fifth, that date is already on the calendar. That is when nomination papers will be available in the town clerk's office. Basically, you go to town hall, you go see the town clerk, Deb Kay. She'll give you, she's our current town clerk. She will give you two sheets of papers with, I believe it's what thirty five or thirty, I think it's thirty five signatures each. You basically need fifty signatures. She recommends getting both pages filled if you can, right? Um it kind of gives you that safeguard for the person who scribbles their name and can't really tell who they are. And then you'll return that typically if there's, I believe there is a state law that says how many days after nominations are pulled. That date is not yet on the calendar, but um once you get both of those sheets filled out, you bring them back, she puts you on you know, on the ballot. You have so many days that if you change your mind and go, what am I doing? Like, no, you have time to pull your name off the ballot. But, you know, if, once you turn them in, you are able to appear on the ballot. They list them, they pull names. It's very random. It's not necessarily a set order that they na, they put you on the ballot. It's basically a name poll to list you. To list you on the ballot. And then. You go, usually there's somewhere between that time and the town election, there's usually a candidate's forum if it's necessary. Um. And during that candidate's forum, you'll be asked questions kind of about your background, just your basic. You know, candidate's forum. School committee is not um really. Political in the sense in Mashpee that you have to declare what party you are a part of, so. If anyone was ever worried like, oh, I couldn't do that because it's too politicized. School committee in Mash, like in Mashpee is not politicized, so. You run as yourself um without any of that other. Conversation really around you unless you want it to be around you, um, and it's kind of what you're willing to disclose as a candidate in a sense, but. You know me, you probably know I'm an open book and I'll tell you. But that's a. That's how the nominee, and that's how this election schedule works. And then on May eleventh of twenty twenty-four, we'll be having our town election where. Um, I believe this term we have two seats up. Um. And, you know, we're not sure yet who will be. Going for those seats, but we do have two of our members who are up. Should they choose to run for reelection. Um. But the process is. It's it's relatively painless, I I will admit. I don't know, Brian, do you have thoughts on the on the process that you'd like to share?
No.
Okay. So, yeah, that's, that's the process and uh pretty straightforward. So if you're ever thinking about it. I'm happy to talk to anybody who's interested. I know um. Other members are also happy to talk to people if you're interested and you have questions, like what's it really like? Being on the committee, hopefully this presentation's helped a little. But I'm always happy to talk to anybody who's interested in running. Um, just because I, I think, you know, it's good to know what you don't know, and if you don't know what it's like to be on a committee or how to run. You know, I'm happy to talk to anybody who's curious.
And also. Just to share from my perspective, I have had candidates in the past reach out to me and I'm happy to meet with anyone. As well, sometimes they're in the stage of thinking about running. Sometimes they've taken out papers. I don't know if they always return them, but they're always welcome to come and have a conversation and. Um, better understand, you know, the school district and and how it functions and what the role of the school committee is, so. We've had that.
Yes.
It's important also to uh stay um up to date with like the campaign, um finance laws. Um, you know, if you are gonna run like an actual campaign. Um, and go out and get um donations and things like that, uh, make sure that you do do the proper paperwork that does need to be filed. Um, and so on and so forth. Um, but also sometimes I think. Um, the biggest hurdle is the signatures, um, as much as you might be intimidated by that. Um, I know people that have gone to Stop and Shop, uh, you know, the post office, the library, and have gotten signatures within a couple hours and brought them right back, so. Um, please don't hesitate to reach out to any of us, like we said, um, if you do have questions about that process or anything else that comes with the position.
Yeah, to Brian's point, standing outside Stop and Shop, you can have some pretty interesting conversations with Mashpee voters and answer a lot of interesting questions. Um, so, you know, again. If you have questions, we're all here to probably, you know, we have no problem sharing our experience and what worked and what didn't and uh how to, how to get your name on a ballot if you're interested. Um, and so here's another example, these kids came and talked about um camp, what was it called? Was it called Camp Falcon this year?
Yeah, Falcon Discovery Camp.
Falcon Discovery Camp, sorry. It changed names. It was Camp Falcon once upon a time. Uh, but they, they went to our summer camp and uh. Shared their experiences and we got to hear about it and it sounded like a great time, great way to spend your summer, so. Um. And we do have, like I said, we have lots of presentations, like Brian said, it's kind of the highlight of every meeting. This particular meeting, we had a presentation from the Vex Robotics Club, um, and their Frisbee Golf Robots. Um, they went, they are, that was last year's, no, that was last year's game.
That was what was, they came to us in either May or June, it looks like June.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, four of those, five of those kids have graduated.
Yeah, so they went to the world competition um and competed and. They built and ran those robots and played Frisbee Golf with them, so it was pretty neat to watch them do that and explain their experience, so. Um. It was. It was great, but also it gives us a chance to say, okay, when we budget for. The robotics team. This is what the money is going towards. It kinda reinforces that, yes, this program is valuable. These students are getting experiences that are valuable. And it is worth, you know, making sure that we are able to continue to fund such programs. So. Yeah, go to the next slide.
I think that was the last one.
That's it, okay.
I'm gonna stop sharing those so we can sort of go to a different uh.
So I guess, you know, with what time we have left, I know that kinda ran pretty close to eight, but. I'm gonna open it up if you have any questions. Um. Or anything that we didn't cover about what school committee does. Um. I'm happy to answer Brian's here, we're happy to answer them, but. Okay. Uh, did you have one, Rick? You can unmute yourself. Yeah, you're you're muted, so.
That's Rick.
Yep. Nope, you're still muted. I don't know, Patty, can you unmute him? Is the organizer?
I don't, uh. Asked to unmute, so let's see, allowed to mute, we need to mute.
All right, we'll get there. There you go.
I think, can you now? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just a casual observer here. I moved into Mashpee in January. I was on the Board of Ed in New Jersey in our small, smaller town. Our mission was clear like yours is, the overarching mission was not to run the schools, but to ensure that they're well-run. And my. Nine, ten months in Mashpee, I'm just amazed that, so all this is is a comment, that's all. Um. Is the schools are unbelievably well-run. You guys do an amazing job at the school committee. I had to learn the difference between a school committee and a Board of Ed. Um, just again, because I'm interested, but e- even uh. In the Mashpee Enterprise, a weekly paper to read. The summary of what's going on in the schools. And the way that comes in handy for me in a sort of ridiculous way. Is I was having a discussion with a friend who also lives on the Cape, actually grew up with her in New Jersey, but. Um, she was talking about her pessimism at the future of the world and what are we leaving the world? Kind of shape we're leaving it in and who are we leaving it to? I s- sent her a copy of the latest of this past Friday and the summary of what you're all are doing with the schools. And I said, if this does not give you optimism, I don't know what does about what kind of world we're building and who we're leaving it to. Um. You, you guys do an amazing job. I did not, I did not start my video because at the beginning of this, I sat down to a, while I watched you, a warm meal. And I'm thinking, I got an instant PTSD thinking about the my years at the, on the board. Thinking, no, these guys have not had dinner yet. They're probably starving. Their families are probably crawling all over them. So I understand the time, the commitment, the passion. Uh, what you're all doing, and I just wanted to thank you. That's all, and I'll, I'll shut up now and let you, let you go on, but.
No, thank you. I appreciate your comments. I think, you know, like I said earlier, Mashpee isn't just. The families, there are a lot of stakeholders who don't have children in our district, but they're, you know, we are the biggest line item on the town meeting budget. So keeping that in mind, having people like yourself. Who are seeing what our schools are doing, who are seeing what our children are achieving and what our students are. Are interested in, like whether it's the Vex Robotics or whether it's. You know, what they're doing in their ST math in second grade with Gigi the Penguin, like. I think that's very important for the community as a whole to understand and why. We do, you know, like, like you said, why we do what we do. So thank you for sharing, Brian. I wonder if you have anything else you wanted to?
Yeah, no, thank you, Rick. I really appreciate it. We know everyone's time is definitely valuable, so thank you for your work that you've also done as well.
Cool, thank you.
Anybody else? No? All right, well, if. If you do have any other comments or anything you think of after. Feel free, again, our, my email's open. You can email all five of us and. We'll do our best to get back to you, but, you know. Feel free to share thoughts, comments, anything you think of after this and. Um. If not, thank you for your time and for sitting through. Our little presentation here and hopefully you learned something tonight, so. Great, thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.